Fifty members present, zero absent.
Thank you. Will you please stand with me and pledge allegiance, and after the pledge of allegiance, we'll have a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now we're moving on to our public comment period. Has everyone signed up who wishes to be heard today during our public comment period? If you haven't, you can submit the paper to our clerk here. Public comment is five minutes that any individual can speak upon any topic they wish to speak upon. The council members at that time cannot address you or answer any questions from you. Those things can happen at a later date, so at a later time, excuse me, in the agenda. So now we're moving forward. Can the clerk please call the first speaker?
Alana Klein.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. If you were at the second December meeting last year, this is very personal for me and as that last one was. Today, actually coincidentally, is World Semi-Colon Day, which is to bring awareness to people who suffer from depression, suicidal thoughts, and the reason for the semi-colon is "Your story is not over." That's a quote. My point to bring this to your attention today is I know you have a larger public voice than I, and to bring out awareness on your social media, if you do that, public appearances, newsletters, appearances at hospitals, the Capitol District's Higienist Center on New Scotland Avenue. I suffer from severe depression. That's not the same thing as suicide. Not necessarily the same thing as suicidal thoughts, tendencies, actions, but it's it's a crippling and debilitating problem. It can really mess with your mental health. It can be tough to hold down a job. It can be tough to enjoy anything in life. It can be tough to roll out of bed. It can be tough to fall asleep. It can be tough to stay asleep. It can be tough to stay awake. It's it it comes, it can sometimes come out of nowhere. You could be laughing, enjoying, and having a pleasant day, and just one little thing goes wrong, and it it shuts you down. So again, I'd just like to see an effort by this council, and I don't know every specific of everything you guys do, and you guys do a fantastic job at everything that you do. I'm just asking you to put one more thing on your personal agendas. So many people in this world suffer from depression and from suicide, and that's not just minority communities, LGBTQ communities, even though those are communities that are at a higher risk. Veterans is another one. I think something like 22 veterans a day commit suicide, or one veteran every 22 hours, it's something similar to that. We just need to try to make this world a better place, and sometimes I can tell you that I'm also an alcoholic, and that definitely doesn't help. It definitely contributes to the depression. But one thing that keeps me sober is finding ways to be active, finding ways for activism. I always make a commitment to show up at these meetings and speak and not drink during the day on Mondays. I'm probably gonna be drinking later tonight, but it's just sometimes you need to find something that is your voice or is some enjoyment in your life. And it's not dependent on success. I'm in the best position I've ever been in as far as my job goes, as far as economically, as far as my apartment, as far as stability and housing, as far as being accepted for who I am. That doesn't necessarily excuse you from depression at all. Robin Williams once had a quote, and I'm probably paraphrasing here, but the saddest people in the world try their hardest to make other people laugh because they know what it's like to feel worthless.
You have one minute left.
Thank you, and they don't want anyone to feel like that. I'm not sure if you've ever heard of Chester Bennington from Lincoln Park. They were an extremely successful rock, rap, musical group for almost two decades. One day, he just hung himself because it was a two-year or two-month anniversary of the death of his friend. So again, if you could just take an effort to bring awareness to this problem, I think it would really benefit many people in this community, many of whom are silent. Thank you for your time. Boycott the NRA, Black Lives Matter. Assalamu alaikum.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Good evening. My name's Mark Ronich. I live at 300 Hackett Boulevard in Albany. My opening comments are directed at the eight members who enjoyed a reelection and not the freshman members, but because I gotta tell you, I think that you guys must be tired of hearing people speak during public comment period. I mean, you just don't listen. You don't listen to what the public says to you, and you don't act on it. You know, I've been coming here for a few years, listening to people whine, cough, and complain. I can understand your situation. When I had issues that I tried to bring to the common council, all I've heard was silence, including from my own councilmen. It's just plain disrespectful and rude. A lot of my comments have been made about the PEG Access Oversight Board. And when I make those comments, I get no response afterwards. I don't see any changes afterwards. It's really it's really discouraging. Now, since many of you are new to the process and may not be desensitized to the public's comments, I'm gonna try again. I'm gonna try to bring out the issues here because there's a problem on the PEG Board, and one of the problems is that there's still, four months into this year, no connection between the Common Council and the PEG Access Oversight Board. There is no formal connection. There's no ad hoc committee. There's no committee, there's not, there's no of the standing committees. It's not, the PEG responsibilities have not been rolled into that, and no one seems to care, four months into the year. And no one questions this, and no one says to the incumbents, those who have been reelected, why are you dragging your feet? Why don't you care about this? You can let this go all you want. I mean, you think this is responsible. This is what annoys me. And quite frankly, I would strongly recommend that the three people who were on, well, two of the three people are still here, who were on the previous PEG ad hoc committee should not be on the new newly, if there's a newly constituted PEG ad hoc committee, those two people should not be on there. I have nothing to do with this because they've proved that they have been failures when they tried. They tried. Now, let's see results. Right now, the PEG Access Oversight Board is going backwards in the sense that they can't even get a quorum. Okay? You like that? You're okay with that? You don't have a problem with that? You don't speak up? I don't know. It just, four months now, we, you know, I was on the PEG Access Oversight Board. No one here had the courtesy to tell me, no, you're not gonna be reappointed. They just simply reappointed the other three, and let me just stand out there wondering what's going on. Well, that's rude, disrespect, and disrespectful. You appointed me to do, to have a three-year term, and I was able to fulfill two and a half of the three years, but no one had the courtesy to say to me, look, Mark, we really don't want you to continue on the PEG Board. You just simply take an action and majority rule or something quiet and sneaky like that, and then the previous chair of the ad hoc committee doesn't even have the courtesy to say hello and talk to me? That's rude and disrespectful, and I'm appalled. And and she goes ahead and
You have one minute left, sir.
That's good. I'm happy I got one minute left. Thank you, Mr. President. And I go ahead and I get called, she goes ahead and calls the security officers downstairs, and then she goes ahead and walks out and then walks back in with the tourneys on her side? I mean, this is not a way to deal with the public. And I'm hoping something changes here. I'm really hoping that you give people more respect than what you gave me. Otherwise, you're gonna see this whole city going downhill. We don't even have people interested in, should be in show producers, and we don't have, the ad hoc committee can't get a quorum. I don't know. I hope that you'll reexamine this and you'll light a fire under someone's butt. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Hello. My name is Robert Mengele. I'm president of Albany Fire, Permanent Professional Firefighters Association, Local 2007. I would like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words this evening. Earlier today, we put a short article in all your mailboxes. The article is a quick read on why the red X placarding system is so vitally important to public safety. There are over 25,000 parcels of property in the city of Albany. Eight hundred to a thousand are vacant at any given time. Of those, 400 to 450 have red Xs, meaning they are the most dangerous ones of all. It is an obtrusive sign in the neighborhood, but it's supposed to be that way to warn the public of the dangers that lurking inside each of those houses. The people the signs protect are police, ambulance workers, firefighters, DGS, the water department, and the public at large. There has been talk of dispatch alerting emergency workers to the status of the vacant buildings if the placards were to be taken down. That is simply unfeasible as the city stands today. Currently, our dispatchers do not have a standard operating procedure in place to notify us firefighters over the radio of these problems. Also, what are we supposed to do when we're on the street or we see if we drive past a fire? The real issue in the city is absenteeism and apathy. Please look to other ways to take down the signs, such as fixing the houses. Please don't penalize public safety by removing the placards. This is a federal program. Chicago instituted this placarding program only after two firefighters died in a vacant building fire. Don't let that happen here in Albany. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the clerk please call the next speaker?
Hello. Jason Muttford, Ward 13, citizen advocate. I just had a question about resolutions introduced, 17 dot 42 dot 18 R. I'll read the resolution. Resolution of the Common Council confirming the appointment of William G. Kelly as Corporation Counsel. At this current time, right behind me is the posting for a Friday public comment period for that exact appointment dated Friday, April 27, 2017. I believe the 17 is actually a typo. There is no such date. It would be Friday, April 27, 2018. But it seems that the public comment period is moot, considering we're already considering confirming him according to that resolution. No? It's an introduction? Okay. That was misunderstood, then. All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Seeing that we have no other speakers signed up for public comment, public comment this time will be closed. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, approval of minutes from previous meeting. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Pres, Mr. President. I move the approval of the minutes of the April 2 meeting.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes approved. Moving on. Reports of standing committees. Mr. O'Brien.
The General Services Committee will meet tomorrow at 5:30 for a discussion of how street paving decisions are made, and you all should have gotten by email copies of two reports. One is how the criterion for how streets are rated with scores of between one and 10, and the other is an actual 2015 edition of a block-by-block rating by the CDTIC of every street in the city of Albany. And I would also note that Michelle offered, the whole document is, I think, 192 pages long. So Michelle offered that if any council member contacts her to make a copy of the certain streets that they're interested in, she will happily do so and have them available at the meeting. So we look forward to participation. The only other point I want to make, not related to streets, is what was discussed in the caucus tonight. Michelle also sent out to everybody an electronic copy of an overview of the solid waste planning process through the years 2017, 18, and 19, and also a overview of the proposals for a transfer station. And I think, you know, we will try and schedule a general services meeting to get a report on that planning process, but as you can see from those documents that were sent out, at least on the transfer station planning process, we are approximately six months to seven months behind. So I will try and notice a meeting for that within the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. The planning, the council's Planning and Economic Development Committee will be meeting this Thursday, the 19th, to interview applicants for the IDA and CRC boards. And we will be reviewing and confirming two appointments to the Historic Resources Commission of John McEnany and Chris Hacker. And then on Thursday, April 26, next Thursday, we will be interviewing applicants for the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Igo. Thank you. Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next Thursday, the 26th, Housing and Community Development Committee will be meeting to review and discuss year 44 HUD funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on April 2, April 10, and then today before caucus to consider all of the remaining bond ordinances. We have two that are being held, and they are for the facility improvements for the Albany Police Department and the Albany Fire Department. Those two are actually being consolidated in the approvals for all city buildings with a reduction of $47,000 because there's money in prior bonds for jail cell renovations. That includes some jail cell renovations. Of the police department bonds, we, all of them were passed out of committee, other than the facility improvements, with no amendments, except for the roadway safety program was reduced by $468,000. That is not because we're anticipating fewer projects, but we're looking to use prior bonding money, previously authorized bonding money that was left over from many, several other bonds for those projects and also some existing projects. For the Parks and Recreation, we we had one bond that was reduced by $30,000 because prior bonding will be used for the purchase of an SUV. And we also considered changes to the types of equipment that will be purchased for snow removal, but did not change the amount of that bond. And finally, we increased the amount of bonding for playground improvements and equipment by $50,000 in recognition of the fact that there is some of the projects done last year in 2017 need to be paid for out of additional bonded funds, and we did not want to reduce the playground projects that are anticipated for 2018. We do not have any future meetings scheduled at this time. However, at some point, we will be looking to meet with the treasurer to listen to the fourth quarter report from 2017 and also the first quarter report for 2018. I will let people know when that is scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duchesne. Any more reports on standing committees? None. Seeing none? No reports on ad hoc committees? Moving to considerations of ordinances. Going to ordinance introduced. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I noticed the introduction of ordinance 254218.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance? Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's a referral to the law committee.
Thank you. Ms. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 26.42.18 for introduction.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance submitted, ordinance 9.21.18, entitled, Inordinates Authorizing Certain Projects by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $1,125,000, and authorizing a lease financing for the issuance of $1,125,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, renovations to city buildings, as adopted by the Albany County Council on March 5, 2018, in relation to any particular authorization there under a maximum limit of $1,527,000.
Thank you. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion requesting unanimous consent to take up ordinance 264218 tonight for consideration and a vote.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 26.42.18 for passage and ask for a roll call vote thereon.
Since the clerk just read the ordinance, is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Rainey?
Yes.
Ms. Appleyers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doschek?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen per cent, zero and a half, zero percent.
Ordinance passes. Moving to ordinance, still with ordinance introduced, Ms. Love? Can the clerk please read the ordinance? Mr. Conti.
Correct, ma'am. No, no committee or referral on that.
Okay. Ms. Love?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 28.42.18, and ask for its passing.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance, please? Thank you. Moving to ordinances held. Ms. Duchesne?
Or Mr. President, before that. So on ordinances held, ordinance, usually I say which ones are coming up, ordinance, item number two, ordinance 122118, and item number eight, ordinance 182118 are held, and the remaining ones are up for a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 11.21.18 for pass and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance? Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Appleyers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doschek?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Fifteen per cent, zero and a half, zero percent.
Ordinance passes. Ms. Doschek?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 13.21.18 as amended and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance? Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Rainey?
Yes.
Ms. Appleyers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doschek?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance 14.21.18 and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance? Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Rainey?
Yes.
Ms. Appleyers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doschek?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawley?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Ordinance passes. Ms. Duchesne?
I notice ordinance 15.21.18 and ask for a vote thereon.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases and projects by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of $200,000, and authorizing a lease financing for the issuance of $330,000 serial and authorizing a lease financing or the issuance of two hundred thousand dollars serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, traffic safety program.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Ms. Doche?
I note that while I am the sponsor of this as chair of the finance committee, I will be voting no on this, and I wanted to explain my vote. This is a request for two hundred thousand dollars in bonding for crowd control barriers, cones, and variable message display boards. The amount being spent on cones and crowd control is about sixty, seventy-six thousand dollars. And we have in a prior bond account, a hundred, from two thousand and fourteen, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for that purpose, which is now, when I called that to the attention of the traffic engineering office, they decided to put that through for, forward for, or reserve it for additional vehicle, uh, variable message display boards. I have some difficulty with that for a number of reasons. We have a very overworked traffic engineering office, and they have a lot of projects on the schedule with regard to, over two million dollars has been bonded in the last eight years that has not yet been used for replacing traffic signals and other road safety items. I would like to see those projects get the full attention of the traffic engineering department. The location of these variable message display boards, which they currently have seven of, and they could also use the money from two thousand and fourteen to purchase another two. They, there is a labor cost associated with bringing those to different locations. We do not have any policies or clear procedures with regard to the placement of those items and for whom they're going to be used. We do not charge fees when they are used for construction projects, for developments, when there is roadway safety issues, and that is something that I think that the developers should be absorbing the cost and we should have a policy of that. When I spoke to Mr. Trudeau and Chief Sears about this, Chief Sears says that he approves individually each one of the locations of these. Now frankly, I would rather have a policy in place and having our chief of police attending to different things rather than reviewing these on an individual basis. I'm concerned that the decisions being made may be arbitrary and capricious because we don't have a set policy with regard to this. And as I have noted, they do have a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars from two thousand and fourteen that could be fo, put forward for this purpose, that would leave them shy just seventy thousand dollars for their initial request that they made this year. And I would rather hold off on that until we have some policies and procedures in place and we take a closer look at that. So I will be voting no on this particular bond ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Any further discussion? Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be voting yes on this. The variable message display boards, which are actually used a lot in my area, they do serve a very important purpose. Right now, for example, today, saw two, one related to the construction project on Henry Johnson, which is a long-term project, it's going to have major traffic implications. They're very useful to alerting drivers of a project that's about to start or ongoing so that people can know in advance and potentially alternate their travel routes, also being used for the Madison Avenue project. But they're also used for special events. And this is, we're coming up to the time of the year when my particular area gets inundated with special events, especially events in the park with Tulip Festival, where again, we come up with no parking restrictions, a number of other events, Lark Fest, all these events that happen, these boards are very helpful. There are a lot of runs that occur in the park as well at this time of year. They're very helpful, again, in terms of alerting people in advance so that people know, especially on weekends, when people tend to park in the park and park their, leave their cars parked through the weekend, that they don't get caught in terms of being ticketed and towed because they didn't realize that there was an event going on and they had to move their car. They've been also been useful for quality of life issues, particular with motorcycle noise, for example, in the summer, in terms of reminding people and motorcyclists of the noise ordinance. And even though that sounds like it doesn't do anything, it does have a noticeable impact on the level of noise that we sometimes experience on Lark Street. One of the things we discovered is because the, you, they, these signs are not always available when you want them or need them because of limitations that are on them or the availability, the numbers that we have. But I do think that they really serve a useful purpose to the extent of being able to provide the public with information. And it, one of the most difficult things we have nowadays is how do you inform the public? It used to be in the old days, you had the radio and television and newspaper. That's no longer effective. You got to find a lot of other mechanisms to do that. Social media, we use social media, not everybody's connected with that. But the, the, the variable message boards are very useful in terms of alerting the public to things that are happening, whether it's major construction projects, special events, snow emergency requirements, which again, is another area where it's really important. And to the extent that we notify people in advance of some of these things that are happening that might have ticket and tow consequences, we're protecting the public. So I, I do find these valuable, um, I, and I would encourage members to vote yes on this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Conti.
And I greatly respect all the work that Councilmember Doche has done, and it's not to take anything away from her concerns and the valuable work she's done as chair of finance committee.
Thank you. Mr. Igo?
Well said, Richard. I think one thing I was omitted is that these message signs can save the city money, okay? Instead of standing a cop at certain intersections wherever, say, up here, okay? The people are going to see, road closed up ahead, and it can save the money in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Igo. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Abstain.
He said abstain.
Yeah.
Ms. Athliers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doche?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawe?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Twelve affirmative, two extensions, one negative.
Ordinance passes. Ms. Doche?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance sixteen point twenty-one point eighteen and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing a lease financing for the issuance of one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, aerial platform trucks.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes.
Ms. Athliers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doche?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawe?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension.
Ordinance passes. Ms. Doche?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance seventeen point twenty-one point eighteen and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please call, excuse, clerk, please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing a lease financing or the issuance of five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, pumping apparatus.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes.
Ms. Athliers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doche?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawe?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension.
Ordinance passes. Ms. Doche?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance nineteen point twenty-one point eighteen as amended. I note the amount on this has been increased to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing a lease financing or the issuance of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, playground equipment.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes.
Ms. Athliers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doche?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawe?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension.
Ordinance passes. Ms. Doche?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance twenty point twenty-one point eighteen as amended and ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of thirty-five thousand dollars, and authorizing a lease financing for the issuance of thirty-five thousand dollars serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, vehicles.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes.
Ms. Athliers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doche?
Yes.
Mr. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawe?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson? Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension.
Ordinance passes. Ms. Doche?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last bonding ordinance of the year, twenty-one point twenty-one point eighteen. I ask for its passage.
Can the clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the City of Albany, New York, at a maximum estimated cost of ninety-nine thousand one hundred dollars, and authorizing a lease financing for the issuance of ninety-nine thousand one hundred dollars serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, snow removal equipment.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes.
Ms. Athliers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Doche?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawe?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension.
Final ordinance bond passes. Moving on, Ms. Doche?
I notice ordinance twenty-four point forty-one point eighteen. I note that the R should come off of that, and I ask for passage of this, in a roll call vote thereon.
Thank you. Can the clerk please read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance authorizing and directing the grant to Albany Medical Center of Adheemen, City of Albany, over a portion of the city right of way, of Myrtle Avenue, for the construction and maintenance of the retaining wall and related footing.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Mr. Hawe?
Mr. President, I'm just a little bit concerned that the work has already started. I just heard tonight, even before we had a chance to vote on it. But I, I don't know how we relay the message to organizations in the city. They should really wait till they get approval from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawe. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Can the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes.
Ms. Athliers?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti? Yes.
Ms. Doche?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawe?
Yes.
Mr. Igo?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension.
Ordinance passes. Moving on to resolutions, consideration resolutions, resolutions introduced. Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution sixteen forty-two eighteen R and ask for its introduction.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council confirming the appointment of John McEnnis as a member of the Historic Resource Commission.
Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President's referral to the Planning Committee.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Igoe.
President, I notice resolution seventeen forty-two eighteen for introduction, and I'd also like to note that the supporting memorandum should be changed, will not affect the resolution. It says to confirm the appointment of Chris Spencer as the Commissioner of Planning and Planning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Igoe. Could the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council confirming the appointment of William G. Kelly as Corporation Counsel.
Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and that is referred to the Law Committee.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Prills.
Thank you, Mr. President. I recognize resolution eighteen forty-two eighteen R and request its, request introduction, reading and introduction, please.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution calling on New York State Legislature to pass legislation creating a state commission on prosecutorial conduct.
Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Prills.
Thank you, madam. I'm sorry, madam.
Hey, it's April now.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Just kidding.
Freudian slip. I recognize resolution nineteen forty-two eighteen R and request its introduction and passage.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution regulating Mother Alice Olivia Bataille on her one-hundred-and-third birthday.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Ms. Prills.
I just want to thank all of you for agreeing to co-sponsor. Mother Bataille wanted to be here tonight, but given the weather, she could not, and so I will keep you posted on the celebration that we will have in the mayor's conference room. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes.
Ms. Athlars?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Duchesne?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawey?
Yes.
Mr. Igoe?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension, all costs passed.
Thank you so much. Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution twenty-fourty-two eighteen R and ask for its passage.
And ask for, excuse me, passage? Okay, thank you. Could the clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution honoring Abby Lee Grease in Union Clinton Avenue between Lexington Avenue and Henry Johnson Boulevard in her honor.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Ms. Athlars?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Mr. Conti?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Should I ask of all who like to be co-sponsors?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you. Continue, count.
Ms. Fahey? Ms. Duchesne? Ms. Duchesne? Ms. Fahey? Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Igoe?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension, all costs passed.
Thank you. Resolution passes. Thank you.
That's my mom.
Thank you. Ms. Fahey, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution twenty-one forty-two eighteen R and ask for its introduction.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council confirming the appointment of Christopher Hacker as a member of the Historic Resource Commission.
Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's referral to the Planning Committee, and, Mr. President, I'd like to ask majority consent to add resolution twenty-two forty-two eighteen R to tonight's agenda.
Do I have a second on that motion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I now notice the introduction of ordinance twenty-two fourteen, forty-two eighteen R and request passage and a vote thereon.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the transfer of funds which will affect the salary total of the Department of Fire and Emergency Services of, for the twenty-eighteen budget.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none, can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Renin?
Yes.
Ms. Athlars?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Duchesne?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawey?
Yes.
Mr. Igoe?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ross? Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension.
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution nine point thirty-one eighteen R is held, and, Mr. President, I recognize, notice resolution fifteen forty-one eighteen R, request passage and a vote thereon.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the roll, I mean, can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council enacting a home rule method to the New York State Legislature requesting the enactment of City Bill Number S-7965 slash Assembly Bill Number 10058 entitled Act to amend Chapter 454 of the laws of 2010 and amendment of vehicle and traffic law relating to authorizing a pilot residential parking permit system in the City of Albany in relation to the effect of this law.
Is there any discussion on the resolution?
Just quickly, Mr. President, just to note, this resolution is a home rule message for legislation that would do a two-year extender to the current pilot, parallel with this, and we need to get this passed and up to the legislature so they can act, but parallel to this, we've begun discussions with those members who are more, most directly affected, either within the current permit system or the surrounding areas, to begin discussion of modifications that we would like to see in the state legislation to address some concerns that we have, you know, in terms of the sunset date, the boundaries, additional spaces that we can be allocated, et cetera, and we're going to continue those discussions with the goal of hopefully having a piece of legislation that can be introduced this year, and if it can be acted on, that would be great, but at least, at the very least, to begin to, begin that discussion of the types of modifications that we think we need in the state authorizing legislation, so that if we can't get it moved this year, we can be, position ourselves well to try to get movement on that next year. But I think it's important that, you know, we move this one, to get the current system extended, begin discussions, and get on the table a proposal for modifications that we need and to be adopted as well. So with that, I'd ask support for this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Ballard.
I thank you for that, Councilman Conti. As many of you know, I am a strong believer that there needs to be some adjustments, some updates to this policy. I do understand the time sensitivity, and that's why I will be supporting this bill, because I don't want us to go backwards. I want us to move forward. So I appreciate the leadership and their support, and I look forward to the difficult discussions that we will have to make the adjustments that will hopefully benefit our residents. Thank you.
Mr. Renin?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Athlars?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Conti?
Yes.
Ms. Duchesne?
Yes.
Ms. Fahey?
Yes.
Ms. Farrell?
Yes.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Hawey?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Igoe?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough?
Yes.
Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ross? Fifteen affirmative, zero negative, zero extension.
Ms. Fahey?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to bring this to all council members' attention. That's been going on, it's actually, it's actually something we've been talking about for a while, but some of you may not be familiar with it. There's a very large public works project that's being proposed, and it would, it's to create a filtration and screening facility, and it is in the top of Lincoln Park, up near Toast, runs along, parallel to Park Avenue there, between Delaware Avenue and Martin Luther King Boulevard. We've had a cup, it's a project, a forty-five million dollar sewer, water sewer infrastructure project, under, being undertaken by our Water Department, and really, one of the largest public works projects that the city has seen in many, many years. There have been a couple of presentations done on this proposal. There's an additional one coming up this Monday, the twenty-third, at six-thirty PM at Toast, and it's from six-thirty to about eight-thirty PM. It's very, going to be very important to get the word out about this. We've tried for the previous presentations, but it just seems like the community is waking up to this presentation or this proposal. So it's important we get the word out widely. Already, there's a great deal of concern about the project, because as soon as you begin to talk about sewers, water sewers, sewage, people are very concerned. But I would strongly recommend that people attend the presentation, get their concerns and their questions answered, because this, a lot of thought has gone into this project. So I will be getting information out to all council members about it. I would just ask that you share with the community, and I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have. But it is important that people find out what this is about. It's, it's not a sewage, a sewage treatment plant. It is not. It, what it does is it takes the overflow that would normally go into the Hudson River, and it, and it disinfects it. And one of the comparisons that the engineers are using is, you know how you put the chlorine in the pool to keep the pool clean? Well, that's the level of disinfection that will happen with this overflow. The majority of the sewage in the combined sewer system, and this is a major trunk that runs through this part of Lincoln Park, does indeed go to a sewage treatment facility. What is being proposed here is not a sewage treatment plant. It's, it's a screening and filtration facility, most of which will be underground, and it will stop the overflow after a heavy storm from going into the Hudson. So I'm really the last person who should be talking about this, so that's why I am encouraging folks to come to one of these presentations. It's not everyone's favorite topic, but gosh, it's a real important that our, our sewers work, our sewers, our stormwater system work correctly. And I just want to say, it has, the area where they're doing it is a, there's a very large ravine that has overflow right now, and it's had it for decades. And I have constituents who have smelled the odors and even gotten headaches from it, and it's a bad situation there, a deep ravine. There's other public safety issues there. So this project has the potential for really improving the quality of life of the people I represent who live in that neighborhood. So again, thank you, folks, and I encourage everyone to come and hear about this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fahey. Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this moment to commend and thank Councilwoman Drew Duchesne for her tireless effort and work during this bonding period. She really made sure that all city departments were borrowing responsibly, and this will have a great benefit in the future for our city and our taxpayers. So thank you, Ms. Duchesne.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. O'Brien.
Couple of points. I did want to build on what Kathy spoke about. As I recall, and I think this is more of a legal question, I believe that New York City, about twenty-five or thirty years ago, did a similar thing in Van Cortlandt Park. It was, since it was a park, as is Lincoln Park, the legal determination was it required an alienation proceeding, which had to go through the state legislature, even though it was ultimately returned to being a park. So I think that's something that should be checked on. I haven't discussed it with the Water Department, although I know in this case, the whole thing is part of a consent decree that we entered into with New York State a number of years ago. But that may be a little hurdle that should be looked into. The Van Cortlandt Park case, temporary alienation of a park to install a filtration water treatment system.
Yes, it's miscellaneous.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Brien. Yes, actually, it has been brought up about the park alienation issue, and initially, the Water Department did not think that they were going to need it. They had looked, asked legal counsel regarding it, but they've looked more closely, and now I do believe they are considering going through the alienation process. So I appreciate that you brought that up. And, and just so, folks, there's a lot, also a lot of folks are thinking this is a done deal and all that. Well, you know, there's, they've worked very hard to put this proposal together, but this is an example of, it's not a done deal. They really want to hear from the public about their concerns, so any kind of changes that need to be made, they can make those adjustments. So please get the word out to your constituents that we're listening about, you know, what needs to change, what are the problems. Thank you.
I wanted to finish on another topic, on the issue, the public comment, or some comment on public access. We don't, I know Richard had indicated he thinks he's going to reconstitute the committee. We don't have anything in writing yet, so there are, I believe, five applications pending for the vacant council appointment and for the vacant mayor's appointment. I believe the mayor is waiting for us to rule on them before she makes a decision. That's what she did the last time. So we don't have anything in writing to act on, and I, and, and the other point, which, I, I did attend the last meeting, which was last Thursday, and there was not a quorum. There were three people out of eleven members, and unfortunately, none of the council appointees are present. Not to disparage them, because they have all, at various times, contributed, but again, it's a frustrating process, I know, for members of the public to wait to see something happen. Although I have, I must say, I have been impressed with Mary Rosack's leadership. I think she has a perfect attendance, as well as at least two other board, board members, and they're making efforts, effort in terms of the PEG Board leadership, to have printed agendas to follow them, to get information out to everybody. But if the PEG, if a PEG ad hoc committee is going to be created, I think we have to know what our mandate is. Is it just to review the pending applications, or is it going to be something more? Anyway, that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Ms. Duchesne? Ms. Duchesne?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Robinson, for those kind words. I do, I do appreciate, we have all new members on the Finance Committee, and the, the conversation has been great, and I've appreciated people showing up on time. Sometimes, you know, absences are unavoidable, but it's been a really good start working with, with the committee. I do want to be done with bond ordinances. So with that, I'm going to ask to withdraw ordinance twelve point twenty-one point eighteen and seventeen point twenty-one point eighteen. Those are the building infrastructure bonds for the Police Department and for the Fire Department that we consolidated in another bond.
Thank you. Mr. Ballard?
I just wanted to respond to the comment that, from the public, that there's no connection between us and PEG. As Mike mentioned, there were council members at the PEG meeting as well to hear and listen to what people's concerns were, and they have made progress, like Mike mentioned. They've hired a coordinator. That coordinator is looking to do inventory of all their equipment. Once that inventory is done, they're going to create a schedule to reopen the, the PEG offices and get stuff up and running. So there has been progress done. What, is it as quickly as we'd like it to be? No. I think everyone can agree to that. But I think it's not fair to say that there's not some type of connection and there's no, no affiliation or working together. People were there, we were present, and we're able to report back to our council members what we heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we adjourn, I just wanted to also address the PEG issue. As reflected in our minutes for the April second meeting, I did announce that the ad hoc committee would be reappointed. It's my fault that we hadn't gotten the, the specific written charge out, but as indicated, the first charge the committee would be to interview applicants for the existing vacancy on the board, and I think we have a couple of applications there. So that will happen. So, you know, my fault that I didn't get that out yet. I will get that done tomorrow, and then the committee would also be on, taking care of that. I think there might be a, a term up for reappointment also, or an expiration, but we need to clarify that. But beyond that, I think, like to see the committee in a time, identified manner, to do the additional oversight, and if, if we're moving forward on things, and if the, you know, we want to make sure that we just have things in place and that the system is operating the way it's supposed to be operating, et cetera, and so that will be the other charge of the committee, just again, to look in and make sure we are in the right direction. I'm listed disappointed in terms of the, the council-appointed members not being at the last board meeting, especially since this is a standing meeting date that has been long established as far as when the PEG Board meets, so it should always be on everyone's schedule. But hopefully, that's one of the issues that we can look into, or the committee can look into, as far as if there are issues there. With that, if there is no further business, I would then make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion passes, meaning adjourn. Meeting adjourned.